All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Telahoma Regional Planning Commission meeting. The Chairman Paul Schwer and call this meeting in order. Determination of a quorum. We have five members, yeah, five members present and two absent. Mr. Sellers and Mr. Comer are absent. So being that five is a quorum, we do have a quorum. And at this time, I'd like everyone to rise and please join me in the place of allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Read and approve the minutes from the April 21st meeting. Entertained a motion on the minutes as written.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Hall, second from Mr. Rice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Minutes are approved as written, five to zero. Motion from Mr. Hall, second from Mr. Rice. Okay. General public comments for items not on the agenda. At this time, I'd like to invite anyone from the general public that would like to come forward and speak on items that's not on tonight's agenda. You will be allotted three minutes of time. If you want to take that option at this moment, please step forward. All right, seeing none, I will close. General public comments. Reports from commissioners and staff. Mr. Luthy.
I don't have any reports at this time.
All right, thank you. Anything from the commissioner? All right, moving on. There is no old business, so we will open up new business. Subdivision plats, these are public hearings. Anyone that wishes to speak on-
Can I make you go back on that?
Uh, maybe, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
(inaudible) can help me if I get it wrong, but, because it does affect all of us. So, the county, of course, has been having a debate about minimum five acre lot sizes and other things related to trying to protect agricultural land in rural areas. And so there was a vote on that last week in the county commission. There was a regional motion to approve five acre lot limits on all A1 in the county. I still wasn't sure how I thought that might affect Tallahassee, especially UGBs. And some landowners down there reached out to me and I talked to Mr. Luthy about it a little bit. So I did make, I did end up making a motion to exclude the Tallahassee, all the municipal, all the UGBs, so that included both the man, and we got a second from one commissioners from Manchester on that. So we ended up approving that amendment. So the county commission passed and or changed the, there's only regs to limit A1 to five acre minimum lot sizes excluding urban growth boundaries. So it remains the same as it was before in the urban growth boundaries. And of course, somebody was kind of pointing out, it's like, well, Tallahassee A1 is five acre minimum lot size, but what's in the urban growth boundary is still under the county previous rules, which is, I believe, like, less than an acre. Wasn't really sure whether that was matter or not, but we felt like it might be something we'd want to think about before we actually do it, a little more than had been done. So just wanted to make y'all aware of that. So, Mr. Luthy, if you had anything, if you have anything to say about that or not, but you don't have to, I just-
No, I just, the properties that are within the UGB, as they currently stand, if they have not been rezoned, are still under the county zoning. So any changes to the county zones would affect those properties. But then once properties come through for a rezone within the UGB, the Regional Planning Commission, which is yourself, would review that rezone, at which point that property would not be within the municipal boundaries of the city of Tallahassee, but it would be governed by its zoning laws. And so that's where it would, it would use our zones, where we'll have properties that will rezone to R1 in the UGB, and they will stop using the county zone and begin using the Tallahassee zoning. And so that's where that kind of plays into it, where any property that is in the UGB that we have not rezoned is still under and controlled by the county zoning.
But for clarification on that, if a landowner in our UGB applied for a rezoning and wanted to move from A1 to R1, they would be, that R1 would be as defined by the city of Tallahassee's boundaries and not the county's boundaries? Okay.
Well, I guess technically, since right now, they could do a subdivision in A1 with smaller lot sizes, but then it would still come through our purple, all right? Or no, that one's on the county. I can't remember. How's it going here?
So when the subdivision in the UGB is applied for, and you have one on your docket today, when that subdivision comes through, this panel, as the municipal Regional Planning Commission, is responsible for reviewing that subdivision application. Once that has been completed, I will forward the minutes of your decision, as well as that subdivision application, to Coffee County. And then it's up to Coffee County to approve that subdivision.
We have the final authority on subdivision approvals, or is not the county, correct?
Yes, so what, if you approve it, it, from my understanding, and there's been some discussions on this process as of late, is in my understanding that if the Regional Planning Commission approves that subdivision, it goes to Coffee County for recording. If you decide not to approve that subdivision, that applicant does have the ability to request the Coffee County full commission to review that. And then that commission can make, either overturn your ruling or uphold it.
Okay. That was my understanding. Thank, okay. Thank you. All right, anything else? Good discussion. That was my, that was my understanding of what happened as well. All right. All right, thank you. All right, back to new business. And Mr. Sellers has, has joined us. Thank you. Let me make note of that. All right, subdivision plats, these are public hearings. Anyone that would, any of the public that wishes to speak on these specific matters on the agenda tonight will be allotted two minutes of time during the, during the public hearing. Item number one, Hernandez, East Lincoln Minor Subdivision Final Plat. A proposed final plat to create three new lots of record at 1004 and 1006 East Lincoln And the applicants for this project are Mr., is Patrick and David Rhodes. This parcel is zoned R2. I'd like to applicant, Mr. Rhodes, either one, to come forward this time and speak on this.
Hello. Yeah, my name is Patrick Rhodes, this is David Rhodes. We're both here. If there's any questions, we're open to it. I don't know if I have any more specific to say on that. If there's any specific question, you can definitely answer.
All right, thank you. No, yeah, you just get first shot, so thanks.
Yeah.
All right, with that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public that wishes to speak at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move the staff report for Mr. Luthy.
Yeah, so the site plan that you have before you, on this one, while it is technically creating three new lots of record, one of those lots, I believe, is 1004, is going to be subdivided in half, and the back half of that is going to become the new parcel. 1006 is going to have a small portion in the rear of that property, is also going to be sold to create a panhandle or a flagpole for that lot, to give it access off of the East Lauderdale alley. And then once that is finished, if you look at the included site plan, Lot 1 will be that existing lot, sans the rear portion of it. Lot 2 will be an existing lot, and that will also be remaining with the existing structure, just removing that rear 30 feet of that lot, giving the new lot, Lot 3, legal access to East Lauderdale Street. One of the things that I was concerned about when I originally got this was the ability for our refuse removal and our trash removal service to get to that property, because it is at the end of a long dead end alley. But currently, there is already a home at the end of East Lauderdale Street that already receives trash and refuse pickup. So I spoke with Public Works, and as long as the resident wheels their garbage can to the end of that flag lot, at the end of East Lauderdale, it won't be any issue for Public Works to pick up that garbage.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Luthy. Entertained a motion from the commission at this time?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Second. Motion for Mr. Sellers. And second from Mr. Rice. Motion to approve with staff comments. Discussion on that. I don't believe there was any staff comments or no, no relevant staff comments. Is that correct?
No, it's true.
All right. Any other discussion amongst the commission?
I had one question.
Yes, sir.
And I'm assuming there is, but just to confirm, looking at the line three lot, I mean, there's technically enough right of way or whatever to get to the alley. Like, I don't know, it just, it's weird looking how it's on the map.
Yeah, so that, that flagpole portion, there are subdivision regulations, is 30 feet wide, so they'll have a 30 foot wide strip to drive down to the end of East Lauderdale.
What, like, I guess at the end of East Lauderdale Street, is it like a cul-de-sac or like what is-
It's just a gravel dead end.
Okay.
So it would just, you know, if you're standing there looking at it, it would seem as if the gravel of East Lauderdale would just continue on down to the home.
Okay.
But the actual right of way would stop at that flagpole portion, and then it would just continue.
Okay. That's all.
Any other discussion? I'll call the vote. All in favor of approval of the final plat of the Hernandez East Lincoln Minor Subdivision? Subject to staff comments, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained? Motion passes to six to zero. All right. Good deal. Moving on. Randy Smithson, Minor Subdivision Final Plat. A proposed final plat to create four new lots of record located at 0 Carroll Hollow Road in the Coffee County UGB. The applicant for this project is Mr. Randy Smithson, and the parcel is to be zoned RS1. Mr. Smithson, as the applicant, you recognize at this time if you wish to speak? Is, I don't believe that is applicant present? All right. This is public hearing. Moving on to open the public hearing for anyone that would speak on the Randy Smithson Minor Subdivision Final Plat, please do so now. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to staff comments. Mr. Luthy.
I would just like to advise that I spoke to Nicholas Northcutt earlier today. He has another planning commission meeting that he's at, on a different municipality, to discuss a rezoning. So I said that, you know, in lieu of being here, I'd be able to answer any comments or questions that the commission had, since the other, other commission meeting, it was not possible for him to miss that one. I would just like to advise the commission, if you look at the subdivision plat, you'll notice lots three and four have soil areas, lots one and two do not. I discussed this with Mr. Northcutt. Reason for that is lots three and four, their soil areas were not as favorable on those lots. So those soil areas needed to be defined to ensure that the home was not placed on those soils, because those are the only viable soil, soils on lot. Lots one and two, the entire site is viable soils. So it's really up to the homeowner or builder where they want to put that home and then put that drain field.
So when you say soils, do you mean for parking reasons?
Yes, these would be soils for a wastewater disposal system. I believe when I spoke, this would be an LPP wastewater system.
All right. Thank you. Motion from the commission.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Hall.
Second.
Second from Mr. Rice. Discussion on this. Mr. Sellers, you recognized.
Where it has the crosshatched area for soils, does that mean that that's not usable for septic lines?
So that is a soil area, that is the area where the soils are usable.
Use are usable.
So in that hatched area, disturbance must be kept to a minimum. The home cannot be placed there. Obviously, the driveway will most likely have to cross some of that, but those areas are hatched out in order to indicate that disturbing those areas should be kept to a minimum.
Okay, that's what I was wondering next, is can it have a driveway and still have that? Okay. Still sufficient area there to build a house?
Sufficient area to place the house, yes, over, I'm not a soil scientist. So once the actual soil scientist receives these soil maps, then goes to do their wastewater system design, they will then have to find out if that is enough soil for the size of home that is proposed for these lots.
Okay.
I would like to propose a amendment, I guess, or comment, add a note to the plat. Basically, it's to add, for, since those are all facing Riley Creek Road, I'd like to propose adding a note to add, basically, they, and I'll let you figure out the exact wording, but to add a hammerhead turnaround in the front. This is basically the same exact thing we did for the major subdivision. We just did a couple of plots down from this with the Riley Creek and G Road. I don't know if you remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically not backing out onto Riley Creek Road.
So that is actually in our subdivision restrictions, correct, already, like?
But, but, but this is not in, it was not in the notes, so that's why I wanted to make this call out as, put it in the notes for specifically a hammerhead turnaround.
Is that a requirement for minor subdivisions?
It's a, yeah. All right, so we have a motion, a motion to add a, to add the note to define the, the turnabout on the driveway.
Correct.
Per subdivision regulations for Mr. Hall. Second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Sellers.
Just clarify, this is the second question.
We can discuss that, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
You recognized, yes.
Yeah, so is that already required for minor subdivision?
Yes, in my review of this one, I missed that. I also was unsure if we needed to have that, since it's in our subdivision regulations and this property is within our urban growth boundary, I was trying to decide whether or not that would be something that we could require. Now, whether or not the note in the subdivision regulations would apply is one thing. A commissioner making that condition is different. So by having that comment, that note can be put on these plots.
All right, so question from Mr. Warsham. Is, if that, if, if that is not a requirement, because based on where this is and our subdivision regulations and stuff like that, is it, is it, is it in our authority to require that? That's not in reasonable, that's not in reasonable and extraneous or whatever the verbiage is? Okay, all right. So we have, we have a good motion, we have a motion from Mr. Hall, second from Mr. Seaborn. Any other further discussion on this? I think it's a good motion. With that, I'll vote on the motion first. All in favor of adding the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, so we have a motion to add a note to define a driveway, to add a note to the, to the plat.
The second was Mr. Sellers, not Seaborn. Yeah, I think that's right.
Yes, that is correct. Yes, yes. Hall and Seaborn. All right. And that motion is to add a note to define a turnabout on the driveway, so that we don't, we're not packing out on the Riley Creek Road. All right. And with that, any further discussion on the, on the plat itself? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor of the amended Randy Smith Minor Subdivision Final Plat? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And that motion passes six to zero as well. All right, all right. Are you caught up? Number three, West Deckard Minor Subdivision Final Plat. A proposed final plat to create four new lots of record located at 400 Spruce Alley, Coffee County tax map and partial numbers, map 127Z Group B. The applicant for this project is Mr. Joe Demby, and the parcel is to be zoned R2. Mr. Demby? Seeing no, Mr. Demby, we'll move on to public hearings. Anyone wishing to speak on the West Deckard Minor Subdivision Final Plat, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to staff report. Mr. Luthy.
Yeah, so this is another minor subdivision to create four new lots of record. Two of those lots are going to take access on South High Street. Two of the lot, those lots will be taking access off of Spruce Alley. You will notice that Lot 1, there is already a dwelling that is being built on that lot. Mr. Demby wanted to start construction on that while we went through the subdivision process, so I made sure that he went out and had that lot staked with all the proposed setbacks and lot lines, to ensure that the placement of that structure would be compliant with the newly created lots. You'll also see there is a 20 foot drainage easement, and that is a constructed swale that runs on that property. It starts at Spruce Alley and it runs over to West Deckard Street. Public Works has been out to monitor that and make sure that the swale is left functional and it was not disturbed in any way, and that the home was not going to encroach into that drainage easement. And that is all compliant and done, up to Public Works to satisfaction.
All right, thank you, Mr. Luthy. All right, motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Hall. Second from Ms. McGee. All right, any discussion on this amongst the commission?
Just a question.
Mr. Sellers.
On lots two and three, are those flag sections just, looks like they're done, I guess, just to get the right square footage?
So, yes, you'll notice some oddities on lots, all of the lots, really. This is part of the difficulty with our ordinance and how it's worded, with restricting both the lot size and the lot width. These lots, while they were able to obtain the lot width, in order to have them meet the required sizes, they had to be constructed in the way that you're seeing, in order to achieve that minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, as well as the minimum lot widths that we have on these properties.
What's a better solution for that in the future?
The better solution for that, as I'm working on right now, with revising the, some of the comprehensive plan materials, is proposing a, a kind of shift away from a minimum lot size, and instead of using a density metric for these, whereas, you know, something if you were to say a 10,000 square foot lot size minimum, would be more appropriately represented by saying, you know, three dwelling units per acre. Because at a 1,000, 10,000 square foot minimum lot size, or 12,000 in our R1, 12,000 square foot lots, you'll get about three units an acre, once you remove required spaces for drainage detention, roads, mail kiosks and all of that. But using that gross density instead of a minimum lot size allows for a little bit more flexibility. It allows you to get the same feel in a subdivision that you would have with a minimum lot size, but it eliminates the need to jump through hoops like this in order to meet more strict requirements of lot size, but you still get the same product that you're looking for in each zone.
Move forward there.
So one question I have is like Lot 4, that's the narrowest little bank, I mean, is that even?
It's a five foot section.
So?
It's five foot by, what's L6? 190 feet.
So, I mean, is the expectation for-
They're going to mow that one little strip.
To run a lawn mower. Like, I sort of get into a situation where it's like, now all of a sudden, we have four fences up. With like-
So with this one specifically, part of the difficulty is our ordinance doesn't actually prohibit this?
Yeah.
This is something that you can do? This is a nice kind of case to present to you, where some of the difficulties with the more Euclidean zoning ordinance come about, where we've got these very strict guidelines stacked on top of each other, where it makes, you know, you have to do something like this in order to make it work. If the zoning ordinance were to change, where we would be able to create four, I don't want to say standard, but more predictable looking lots, then these could be, these lot lines could be changed and cleaned up at a future date. But as it stands, this sort of subdividing is not prohibited and is required to make sure these lots are compliant for our ordinance.
Bonus points for using Euclidean in a planning meeting.
I just feel there could be a, a better way to divide that.
Yeah, but- I thought it was pretty ingenious the way they did it.
I mean, it's-
To get the right area. It looks awful.
It just, it seems like it'll cause problems at some point. Either someone's going to fence in someone else's property, whether they care or not, or they put a fence up around a five foot section that you can't even get a mower in, or I just, forcing four lots into a lot that maybe don't, doesn't necessarily fit four lots.
And I always thought the flagpole was more or less for, to get access to a property, not-
Not the good area?
Not, let's create a less than a quarter of acre and then run a five foot strip a quarter mile down the road to-
I mean, reasonable question, is that considered a flag lot?
No, the flag lot, the flagpole is determined as a section of the lot used for access. Since these lots all have frontage, they are traditional lots, because they do have direct frontage on a public maintained and publicly accessible right of way. Our regulations does not say you can't have an odd shaped lot.
I just have a hard time voting for something like this, it's just, almost nonsensical.
All right. So in the future, we need to, we need to adapt our standards to figure out a way to define some kind of minimum, minimum way to work around that. Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
To me, the mowing question is probably the biggest one. Who's going to be responsible for mowing that, two sticking down there with four different lots in it?
I just, I just don't think it's realistic, you know, it's-
I think it's a realistic expectation that it will not be maintained.
Exactly. That's the problem.
And if, and again, if the commission would like, while I'm not sure, due to the fact that this lot technically is compliant, we'd be able to deny the project, we may be able to defer it and request that the applicant provide an alternative layout for the subdivision.
Is there a path here for Board of Zoning Appeals approval of a different layout?
Um, yeah, probably not.
It's not a zoning appeal.
No.
I think no, yeah.
It becomes diff, so if, and I see where you're going with the avenue of a variance, but unfortunately, we are not able to give variances on lot size, minimum lot sizes. So, you know, we would be limited in terms of what we could actually give to this, this one, in terms of variance. We can, I guess you could request, you defer the project and request the applicant make reasonable efforts to come up with a more simplistic subdivision layout. That is something that you could do.
But you have to make a separate motion for that, correct?
Yes, you have to make a motion for a deferral and then defer the project, and you'd request that you do not think that sufficient efforts have been made to subdivide the property in a more compatible or conveniently represented way.
Or at least write a maintenance plan?
I will make that motion.
All right, say, say something.
To defer to, help me out. You said it well.
Make a motion to defer the item till the June Planning Commission meeting, on the basis that the applicant needs to make substantial efforts, or satisfactory efforts to modify the subdivision, to make it more feasible, I guess.
I got you. Again, a motion from Mr. Hall, second from Mr. Rice. Let our recorder- Let our recorder break her wrist off here. All right, are we good? Can you read what you got, please?
To defer the item to the June meeting, so that the applicant needs to make substantial efforts to modify the subdivision to make the lots more feasible.
Okay, all right. Motion to defer. Just a note on the motion to defer in Tennessee, that we have 60 days to approve this, or we have, to approve or deny this, or it becomes record anyway. Is that, that's my understanding?
Yes, you will have until the next meeting. It cannot be deferred again. You would either, you, basically, under the ruling, you get one deferral. And then you either must make a motion to approve or deny at that subsequent meeting.
Okay, all right. Got you. All right, so we got a motion on the floor to defer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion to defer to the June meeting is 6 to 0. All right.
Is, and R 2, is it 10,000 minimum? 10,000 square foot minimum, is that right?
Yes, I believe so.
I'm just wondering why they needed that, Lot 4 needed that area, because they were at 10,500. Seems like if you took that off, they would be just at 10,000. Yeah, I think there should be, some way they could rearrange that to where only 2 sections do it.
Yeah, he could cut chunks out of the side of it.
If you only had 2 sections, it would be feasible. Yeah.
Yeah, I can work with the applicant and with the surveyor. I can contact, I believe this one was Andy. I'll contact Andy tomorrow, and I'll have a sit-down and see if we can come to a more feasible solution. It's just, for me, as staff, if something like this isn't non-compliant, there is limited into what I can say or not to require. My opinion on a subdivision, I can't use, so, but as the commission, you can have a little bit more power in that. So, while it's not non-compliant, you know, that doesn't, that, I can't do anything and tell the applicant to change it, but you can.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to site plans. Dollar Tree site plan. Proposed site to build a new Dollar Tree retail store located at 633 East Carroll Street. The applicant for this project is BDT LLC, and the parcel is to be zoned C 2. I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward at this time. Sir, you're recognized.
Phil Van Zwaik, William, Kevin Horn, Rex and Don.
All right. If you'd like to speak about the project, you're recognized. If we want to just answer, entertain questions, we'll go with that.
Stormwater, technical loads, A.D. permit, who worked this mission, you've got that permit? All right, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Let me find your page here. All right, this is a public hearing. I'd like to invite anyone from the public at this, or, I'm sorry, is it? All right, public hearing, if you'd like to invite anyone from the public at this time to come forward and speak on this, if. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move the staff report. Mr. Luthy.
Yeah. The site plan application is for the creation of a new Dollar Tree location at the Carroll Street address mentioned above in this site, our staff report. Our location's at 633 East Carroll Street. This site plan came in a while ago. This applicant has really put in quite a bit of work to get this site compliant, and there's been a lot of back-and-forth on this one, a lot of comments, and we are glad to see that we have finally gotten it to a point where we can, you know, say that it is compliant. And, you know, I'd like to recognize, there are all the staff members that have worked with the applicant on this, Public Works and our engineering, really had quite a bit of back-and-forth with the applicant. And it's nice to see this finally come to a conclusion and to get this site plan before you.
All right, thank you. All right, entertaining motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And then second, Mr. Sellers. All right, discussion from the commission.
I assume, so you said stormwater was the reason, maybe the size of the retention basin, that kind of thing, is what was holding things up?
What was the, what was the?
We're not the usual record, we represent the owners, I'm not.
They started out with a different engineer that was from out of state that, I think, really didn't have a good feel for Tennessee's MS 4 permit and just what the stormwater requirements really consisted of. This site also has some wetlands on it, which complicates matters. You know, they had to provide buffer zones, which they originally were not providing. And it was a tight site, you know, even without those buffer zones, when we had to have them go back and comply with those things, it became an even tighter site, but they have managed to come up with a way to make it all work that is compliant and has what they need, you know, for the site, so, but it took, as Mr. Luthy indicated, it took a good bit of back-and-forth to get to that point.
That's pretty much my question. The only, the only other thing, the applicant will need to submit, sign long-term maintenance agreement and retention maintenance agreement to the Public Works Department prior to obtaining any building permits. So a path forward from here is approve of the site plan, and then permits will start being pulled.
Yeah, so a lot of the stuff that we brought in was items for their stormwater permit and their land disturbance, which technically comes after this approval. But while we had the applicant in the building and while we're dealing with it, we wanted to get all of this done now, so that, you know, we wouldn't approve the site plan, and then they would have to go back and forth with Mr. Patterson on different items.
Yeah, and we do have all of those documents at this point. I mean, they may not have been finally signed, and maybe we'll have to sign some of those documents, but we have all of those in hand at this point.
Any other thing in the commission? All right, with that, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the Dollar Tree site plan? Subject to staff comments and considerations? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Abstained? All right, thanks, sir. Motion passes 6 to 0. Good luck. Item C, zoning map amendments, there are no zoning map amendments on the agenda tonight. There is no annexations on the, on the agenda tonight. With that, we are, the planning commission is adjourned, being at the end of the agenda, and I will call to order the Board of Zoning and Appeals meeting. So, and read, item number 2, read and approve the minutes from the April 21, 2025 Boza meeting. Motion for the amendments is written.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve for Mr. Sellers. Second for Mr. Rice. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained? Minutes passed as written, 6 to 0. There is no old business, there is no new business. We are adjourned, and we'll see you next month. Thank you.
I will be.